Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Allen, Barker, Beck, Bentley, Berry, Boyd, Bragg, Bro, Brown, Birch, Cap, Kavanaugh, Christensen, Cloud, Clowney, Coleman, Collins, Cooper, Cozart, Crawford, Crawford, Dolby, Andy Davis, Marsh Davis, Deffenbaugh, Delarosa, Dotson, Douglas, Eaves, Initt, Eubanks, Evans, Deborah Ferguson, Ken Ferguson, Fielding, Charlene Feig, Lanny Feig, Flowers, Fortner, Garner, Gazaway, Glover, Godfrey, Gonzalez, Gray, Gray, Hawks, Hillman, Grant Hodges, Monty Hodges, Holcomb, Hollowell, House, Jean, Jett, Johnson, Kelly, Ladyman, Love, Lowry, Lundstrom, Lynch, Maddox, Maddox, McGee, Mayberry, McCollum, McCullough, McGrew, McKenzie, McNair, Meeks, Miller, Murdoch, Nix, Peyton, Penzo, Perry, Petty, Pilkington, Richardson, Ritchie, Richmond, Rushing, Rye, Scott, Slape, Brant Smith, Stu Smith, Servillo, Speaks, Springer, Sullivan, Tosh, Vaught, Wardlaw, Warren, Watson, Whitaker, Wing, Womack, Wooton.
Ms. Speaker. With eighty-nine members present, the Chair sees a quorum. Are there any requests for leave? Representative Dolby, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Charlene Feig? So noted. Representative Gray, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Vaught? So noted. Representative Kavanaugh, for what purpose? What's your request? Is leave granted for Representative Marsh Davis? So noted. Representative Dolby, you're recognized. You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Speaks? So noted. Representative Wing, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Deffenbaugh? So noted. Representative Bragg, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Holcomb? So noted. Representative Dolby, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Maddox? So noted. Representative Gray, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Dan Douglas? So noted. Representative Cooper, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Wooton? So noted. Representative Garner, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Cindy Crawford? So noted. Representative McCollum, for what purpose? You're recognized. Is leave granted for Representative Grant Hodges? So noted. Mr. Clerk, please read the proclamation from the Governor.
To all whom these presents shall come greetings. Whereas an extraordinary occasion has arisen making it necessary to convene the Ninety-second General Assembly into extraordinary session. And whereas an outbreak of coronavirus disease two thousand nineteen, COVID-19, has spread throughout the world resulting in a global pandemic. And whereas on March the eleventh, two thousand twenty, by Executive Order twenty dash oh-three, an emergency was declared in the state as a result of COVID-19. And that emergency is ongoing. And whereas COVID-19 continues to spread throughout the United States and Arkansas bringing great hardship to bear upon the citizens of Arkansas. And whereas necessary measures taken in an attempt to limit the spread of COVID-19 have brought great hardship to bear upon commerce in the state impacting the revenue of the state of Arkansas. And whereas on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty, the United States Treasury Department and the Internal Revenue Service announced the federal income tax filing due date is extended from April fifteenth, two thousand twenty, to July fifteenth, two thousand twenty. And taxpayers may also defer federal income tax payments due on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty, to July fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Without penalties and interest regardless of the amount owed, as a result, Arkansas extended its tax deadline for individual income tax filings and payments to be consistent with this date, further impacting revenue. And whereas there is an urgent need for the state of Arkansas to make budgetary adjustments to respond to the impact of this emergency. Now therefore I, Asa Hutchinson, Governor of the State of Arkansas, by virtue of the power and authority vested in me by Article Six, Section Nineteen in the Arkansas Constitution, do hereby call an extraordinary session of the General Assembly to convene in Little Rock on March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, at one P.M. And I do hereby specify that the General Assembly is convened in such session to consider and if so advised enact laws for the following purposes. Number one, to create the COVID-19 Rainy Day Fund, to transfer funds to the COVID-19 Rainy Day Fund, and to declare an emergency. For Arkansas to be affixed this twenty-fourth day of March in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty. Asa Hutchinson, Governor.
In accordance with the provisions of Article Six, Section Nineteen of the Arkansas Constitution, no business other than that which is germane to the items in the call of the Governor will be considered until all items in the call have been disposed of. Representative Cap, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move we go into a committee of the whole to hear remarks from our Governor.
That's a proper motion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is passed. We are in committee of the whole. Members, I'm honored to introduce to you the Honorable Asa Hutchinson, Governor of the great state of Arkansas.
Thank you. And I should thank each of you for responding to the call today. Mr. Speaker, Shepard, members of the Arkansas General Assembly, a brief reflection on history. This is the only, only the second time since the House left the old State Capitol in nineteen oh nine that the members have convened outside the Capitol. It is safe to say that this is the only time the House has convened on a basketball court. I suspect we might have set a national record in terms of, of our attendance today and the circumstances of today. Thank you for having the necessary public health protocols in place. Mr. Speaker, I particularly want to applaud you for not only having a high regard for the members of the Assembly in terms of their health, but also setting the right example for all Arkansans. As you can see, this meets the Department of Health guidelines. And it was not easy to do, and again, I applaud you for having the highest consideration in that area. On March eleven of this year, only fifteen days ago, I declared a public health emergency. Since then, in two weeks, the world in which we live has changed. Our COVID-19 cases have increased from zero to over three hundred. We have had two deaths. School buildings are empty. Education is online. Hundreds of small businesses have been closed and over twenty thousand people in Arkansas have lost their jobs. And yes, we have learned a new vocabulary that includes social distancing, a word we were not familiar with before all of this started. And while our world has changed, God is still on his throne. And the heart and soul of Arkansas has never been stronger. We are innovative in our work, we are supportive of our neighbors, and we are determined to win over this invisible enemy. And this again brings us back to history. The COVID-19 pandemic echoes many things about the influenza epidemic that started one hundred and two years ago in February of nineteen eighteen. The U.S. Public Health Service Officer in Little Rock offered some advice that sounds like the advice we are dispensing today. Cover up each cough and sneeze. If you don't, you'll spread disease. Seven thousand Arkansans are known to have died during that influenza epidemic of nineteen eighteen. But the toll may have been much higher in our state for various reasons. Schools were closed, but today we know much more about infectious diseases than they did then. And we have to learn from history, and that is why we're here taking action and asking Arkansans to do their part. Today, while there is uncertainty about the future, there is hope and confidence in the American spirit that has overcome challenges from the Great Depression to war and natural disasters. Now let me assure all Arkansans that there has never been a more united response to a crisis than what we see in this room today. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, committee chairs, and so many others that have come together to find the right answer to this emergency. The bill that is the subject of this special session was the result of teamwork. Teamwork between the Senate and the House. Teamwork between the legislative and executive branches of government. And while this session may be short, the impact will be lasting. Your work will shore up our balanced budget. Your efforts the next few days will also ease the financial burden of thousands of Arkansans by postponing the payment of individual income taxes for ninety days. That would not be possible without your presence here today that shores up the budget that gives us the flexibility to accomplish that important objective. This important relief will ease the mind and lift the pocketbooks of Arkansans who are struggling because of the current crisis. And the legislation on your desk will allow, allow the state to move quickly to respond to hospital needs, hospitals who need more ventilators, to nurses and first responders who need more protective masks, and to the needs of our dedicated state employees on the front line of this fight. And so on behalf of all, thank you for convening today in response to the call and your urgent work to make sure that we can endure and be prepared for the crisis ahead. Thank you for your willingness to work together, Democrats and Republicans, to meet the historic challenge that is before us. Thank you, and God bless the state of Arkansas and the United States of America.
Representative Cap moves that we rise and report progress. That's a proper motion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
I'd like to begin by thanking the Governor for his remarks and for him taking time out of his very busy schedule to be with us this morning, or this afternoon rather. And I know that we very much appreciate hearing from our Governor on this very important matter. I'd also like to thank the University of Arkansas at Little Rock for their work in helping to make today's meeting possible. I'd like to thank Arkansas Public Broadcasting for likewise working to make today's event possible. And I'd like to thank everybody else that helped to facilitate this. This all came about within the matter of about seventy-two hours. We had been working for several weeks on different contingencies in advance of the upcoming fiscal session, but then as things began to move rather quickly over the weekend with regard to a possible special session, I very much appreciate the House staff, the Bureau staff, and everybody else involved with helping to make this possible. I'd also like to thank Representative Wing for his hard work. And I probably should clarify that your seating assignment is loosely related to where you sit in the House chamber. So if you're on the far ends, I just want you to know that. But likewise, I'd like to thank Representative Johnson, Representative Cloud, Representative McGee, Dr. Patterson at UAMS, Dr. Bledsoe, our State Surgeon General, and Dr. Smith at the Department of Health. We've had numerous conversations from the very outset. I reached out to and had staff reach out to various individuals as to what would be the appropriate, the proper way for us to meet and minimize the risk of the further spread of the virus with which our state, our country, and our world are confronted. And you may have read in the paper, but I, I asked numerous times of our public health officials, is this overkill? Is this something that we should just stay in the House chamber for? And the response was repeatedly no, that if you can go to a larger location, a larger venue, that is what needs to occur. And I would like to also, beyond thanking those individuals, I'd like to take the time to thank our healthcare workers and all those on the front lines of fighting this virus right here in our state, across our country, and around the world. The sacrifice we make by leaving our homes to come into special session and maintaining social distancing is a far cry from the sacrifice that those individuals make and are making on a daily basis, and I'd like for you to join me in thanking them. I'd like to thank each of you as the members of the House for taking time to be here for this special session. I appreciate your flexibility in terms of working with the logistical aspects of arriving here early, of going through the screening process. If nothing else, the conduct of our meetings here today is a powerful message to the people of Arkansas that when the Governor and Dr. Smith and Dr. Patterson and Dr. Bledsoe talk about the importance of social distancing, that they mean it, that this is serious business, and that if we as members of the House can spread out and move to another venue and maintain that social distancing, we would ask that the people of Arkansas, if at all possible, to maintain such social distancing in their interactions. And that we can each do, as Dr. Horn referenced in his prayer, we can each do our small part to hopefully bring about the end of this virus. I'd like to speak to our fellow Arkansans who are watching on Arkansas Public Broadcasting. Our thoughts are with each of you, and our thoughts and prayers are with each of our fellow Arkansans who are affected by the current pandemic with which we're faced. Today is an opportunity for us to come together and take an initial step on part, on the part of the legislature in addressing this response. You know, I'm not going to belabor the point here this morning. I'm not going to give any extended remarks. We all know that when we meet as a House of Representatives, it's important business. I think you've all come to know that generally when we convene, that I've tried to emphasize that, that point, that what we do is important, that no matter what the bill, no matter what the issue, it matters to somebody, and it should matter to each one of us. But even more so when we are called into special session, when the Governor makes a decision that it is, that the issues that we face are such that we should be called in from the four corners of the state to address the pressing issues of the day. But all the more today, when the Governor calls us into special session in the midst of a, of the COVID-19 outbreak, it just further underscores the importance of the matter at hand. We face an unprecedented challenge as a state, as a country, as a world, a challenge that presents itself on multiple fronts. The fabric of our lives, our faith, our community, our country have been stretched, but fortunately that fabric still remains. And so today I ask that you join me as we take a step in addressing the COVID-19 outbreak, in addressing the issues that we face. I ask that you join with me in these efforts to take that needed step to address the issues that are before us. I thank you all for your service. I pray that God would guide our steps and our decisions, and may God bless the great state of Arkansas.
Representative Cap, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move we suspend for the duration of this special session, House Rule Thirty-eight, P through T, setting minimum lengths of time for circulation of fiscal impact statements related to specific types of legislation.
That's a proper motion. It's not debatable. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Representative Cap, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend for the duration of this special session, House Rule Forty-one, requiring bills to be on the desk for at least twenty-four hours before final passage, and prohibiting bills from being placed on committee agendas no sooner than the second calendar day following its filing.
It's a proper motion. It's not debatable. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Representative Cap, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move we suspend for the duration of this special session, House Rule Sixty-A, setting minimum lengths of time for notice of committee meetings.
It's a proper motion. It's not debatable. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Mr. Clerk, please read House Resolution One Thousand One.
House Resolution One Thousand and One, to provide a temporary emergency procedure of the House of Representatives of the Ninety-second General Assembly, and to provide for voting by limited directed proxy in certain circumstances.
Read the resolution a second time.
House Resolution One Thousand and One.
Read the resolution a third time.
House Resolution One Thousand and One.
Without objection, members, I'm going to present this resolution from my seat here to minimize as much as possible some of the movement around the, the arena. House Resolution One Thousand One is a resolution, it is for an emergency, temporary emergency rule within the House to allow for voting by directed proxy. It, I sent out a copy of it previously in advance, but basically because of the situation we face with the COVID-19 virus and the concerns we have for the health of, of the membership, particularly those who may be in a category of individuals who are at a higher risk for that, and also with the potential to have individuals unable to attend because of issues related to the outbreak, it seemed that it would be proper to attempt to adopt an emergency process. This is a rule that was, is very similar to a rule that the Senate is taking up. It's fairly self-explanatory. It would remain for the duration of the General Assembly, and so this would likewise apply not only in the special session, but the upcoming fiscal session, and potentially if there were any other... if there were any other special sessions that might occur in the future. Likewise, it would apply for committee meetings. As you can see by the process, it provides that members would fill out a form of proxy or send their proxy in. It would provide for the majority and the minority leader to handle those proxies, and then they would delegate those to individuals who could speak or vote on behalf of that member. It's not a proxy that gives those individuals leeway to vote any way that they please, but actually it would direct them as to the absent member's wishes and what their desire is as to those particular pieces of legislation. Are there any questions? Would anyone like to speak against the resolution? Would anyone like to speak for the resolution? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Clerk, please notify the Senate that the House is in session and ready for business. Mr. Clerk, please notify the Governor that the House is in session and ready for business. Read the bills, Mr. Clerk.
House Bill 1001, an act to create the COVID-19 Rainy Day Fund, to transfer funds to the COVID-19 Rainy Day Fund, and to declare an emergency and for other purposes.
Without objection, read the bill a second time.
House Bill 1001.
Committee of the whole. Representative Cap, you're recognized. That's a proper motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We're in a committee of the whole.
Mr. Speaker, you're recognized to present House Bill 1001.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, House Bill 1001 would create the COVID-19 Rainy Day Fund and would transfer the surplus funds to the COVID-19 Rainy Day Fund. I'd like to begin by thanking the Governor's Office for their work on this bill, and likewise thanking the Senate for their work. I'd also like to thank Representative Jean as Chair of Budget, Representative Eves as Vice Chair of Budget, Representative Jett as Chair of Revenue and Tax, Representative Wardlaw, who's the Chair of ALC, and then our Majority and Minority Leader for their work and input as to this bill and as to these proceedings in general as we move towards this special session. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, we face some unprecedented challenges as a state, and it has become necessary to address one of those challenges, which comes in the form of the loss of revenue. Earlier this week, we provided membership with several different schedules that were prepared either by DFNA or primarily by BLR, and those lay out some of the specifics with regard to the challenges that we face. But with regard to the loss of revenue, let's start there. Unquestionably, I think we all understand that we're in the midst of trying economic times. As you all know, generally our revenue numbers, our economic data is given by looking at what has happened in the past. And so while we're in the midst of a time of economic challenge, it's also very unpredictable as to exactly what that will specifically mean for the state in terms of loss of revenue. A number of different individuals, not just in our state, but really all across the world, are looking at these issues and trying to anticipate what exactly will be the impending impact of a change in lifestyle, a change in commerce, the restriction of much of our daily lives. And so the Governor's Office had approached the legislature, legislative leadership, about some of the challenges. And I would like to thank Larry Walther from DFNA and others from the Governor's Office from coming over today, as well as Jill from BLR. I've asked that they be here today so that we can make sure we have accurate information. Additionally, others may be arriving here in a little bit after they finish with their stop in the Senate. But the Governor's Office, the executive branch, approached us with some of the challenges that we're going to face as a state. One of those is that we anticipate a loss of revenue with regard to just the effects of the virus. Individuals are not able to get out, travel, buy things, visit stores, restaurants, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. Furthermore, one of the things that brings us here today is the fact that, as you all know, the federal government extended the deadline for filing and paying a federal income tax, and that moved that date from April 15th back to July 15th. And I know that many of you, like myself, begin hearing from our constituents, accountants, and others across the state asking for the state to take similar action for a number of different reasons. But unquestionably, with a tax deadline that is coming up in just a few weeks, with the fact that individuals are not able to get out, with the fact that individuals are having, may be facing particularly challenging economic times at the present moment, it seems that moving that deadline makes all the more sense. But between those two factors, the likely economic downturn that we're in the midst of right now, the fact that we have looked to move back the state individual tax filing deadline to July 15th, the best estimate that we have received is that the loss of revenue to the state is $353.1 million. And that's the challenge that we have before us. Now, as you know, and we've become very well acquainted with, at the end of each regular and fiscal session, we adopt the RSA, the Revenue Stabilization Act. And the Revenue Stabilization Act is used to apportion and distribute those funds to the various agencies, departments, and boards and commissions of the state. The other thing that it does is it prioritizes that spending. As I believe we all know, the A category is spent first. If we have enough revenue, then we move into the B category. If we still have enough revenue, then we move into the C category. Prior to this outbreak, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but we were on course to be able to fully fund A, fully fund B, and fund to some degree the C category. In light of the best estimates that we've been provided with the $353 million shortfall, that's going to present shortfalls, it's going to present the elimination of C, the elimination of B, and the reduction of Category A funding. What this bill does is sets up a mechanism by which we transfer our surplus revenue, which is approximately $170 million. We transfer that to a new fund, which is the COVID-19 Rainy Day Fund. We already have an existing Rainy Day Fund, but the thought was that instead of putting it into that existing fund, we wanted a fund that would be separate and apart, and that would be very transparent as to its uses and how much money is actually in that fund. Now, one of the things that I think is important to remember, and I know there's been some discussion about the requests that we receive from the Governor's Office if this bill is passed, and then the legislative approval authority of those requests, but I would submit to you that probably nine out of 10 people, when faced with this particular issue, would have initially said, let's just move the money from surplus, we'll use it to backstop our revenue, and we'll distribute it according to the RSA. And that would be, that would make sense. But the challenge that you have and the advantage to this proposal is that this allows some degree of discretion to get the money where it's needed. The cuts that occur in RSA are approximately 4.18%. That's the cut to Category A. The various agencies and departments will have to look at how they, and make decisions for themselves as to how those cuts are implemented within their various departments and agencies. There may be some that can withstand that, that can handle it within the confines of what they already have. I mean, we've seen that there, our world has been turned upside down. Agencies and departments are having to do things differently, so there could be savings that's already there that can withstand those cuts. But the advantage of this bill is that it allows some discretion where the Governor can make a request for those areas where Category A funding needs to be backfilled. But then additionally, the other thing that a request may be received for is to address the specific issues of the COVID-19 virus. And so when you look at this, I want, I would like for you to keep that in mind. And what I mean by backfilling the shortfall, for example, the Department of Health, that's probably an entity that needs to be taken care of right now. I think we could all agree. And so this allows a process to make sure that that occurs. But then additionally, it also allows a process by which, if there are additional pressing needs, that the Governor can make that request. It would be considered by the Speaker, the Majority Leader, the Minority Leader, and likewise by the Pro Tem, the Majority Leader, and the Minority Leader on the other end. And with the agreement of two out of three on each end, then that expenditure could be made. And so I think this is a preferred way to handle it, because the other alternative, which I submitted on the front end, is something that probably would have been most of our initial reactions, is just move the surplus over. Well, that would, that would move the surplus, and the surplus is gone. Under the current scenario, it may be that that surplus still gets expended. But on the other hand, if it is not, if it turns out that we don't need to utilize all of that surplus, as of June 30th, the money goes back to the surplus, and that's the end. So what we're really dealing with here is a method of being able to help to address the needs that are existing for the balance of our fiscal year, the remaining three months. As for the next fiscal year, we'll take that up in the fiscal session. And I know the Governor's Office is already starting to look at what that proposed RSA may look like, but for now, we desperately need to pass this. It's something that is going to allow us to more, to allow the Governor's Office, along with legislative oversight, to be able to address the needs that we have. And I think you've all seen that in the world that we're in right now, and the needs that we have at the state level, those needs are changing not day by day, but hour by hour and minute by minute. And so that's one of the reasons why this structure is proposed. Again, I'd like to thank the committee chairs that I mentioned early on for their work on this. It was something that was worked between the House and the Senate and the Governor's Office, and, you know, I think that it is a good proposal. I think it makes sense. I think it allows us an opportunity to more effectively address the challenges that we I thank you for your time.
If any members have any questions, you'll need to come down to one of the mics. We have any question, we've got people from the Governor's Office over here. Representative Laub, you'll come down to one of the mics. You'll be recognized when you get down to the mic. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My understanding, looking at the filings, is that there will, there's only a Senate bill. Is that correct?
There's a House and a Senate bill. And so we're, we have two identical bills that, that will, one is running this morning, or this afternoon in the Senate. The House bill is what's before us today, and then we'll hopefully send each to the other end.
Follow up, please.
You're recognized.
Well, I've just checked the Arcleg page, and it shows that there's only one filed bill right now. It's a Senate bill that has both Senate and House members as sponsors. So I just want to get clarified whether we are going to be sending our version of the bill over to the Senate, and the Senate sending a version over to us, as is normally done.
That is the plan, and actually, last night, I went to the BLR's website and printed a copy of the House bill. Now, I don't know, there may be a technical issue, but as of last night, it was, it was there. It's House Bill 1001. It has approximately 40 House cosponsors on this bill, and I believe around 20 Senate cosponsors. And both the House bill and the Senate bill have House and Senate cosponsors on them.
Okay. Follow up, one other follow up.
You're recognized.
Okay. Without a copy of the bill in front of me, I may be wrong on the reference, but on page two, line two, there is a reference about transfer of funds as allowed by law. Is it, my understanding is that allowed by law could also include the statute that was passed in the last session under transformation that allows transfers from within departments. And I just wanted to see if this transfer allowance is something that includes being able to transfer trust funds into the COVID Rainy Day Fund. I just want to get clarification on that transfer.
I'll ask Mr. Anderson to come answer that. My understanding is that that's kind of some boilerplate language that's utilized on, when we adopt bills like this, but I'll let Mr. Anderson respond to that.
Mr. Anderson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Kevin Anderson, Bureau of Legislative Research. What we're looking at there is the fund creation, and part of creating a fund is allowing monies to be sent to that fund, and no monies will be sent to that fund unless specifically authorized, like is done in this bill. Therefore, you couldn't go out and grab trust fund monies or any other monies without the General Assembly authorizing that transfer. And this bill authorizes the transfer of the surplus funds, the $173 million, into that fund. It's simply a mechanism to allow a fund legally to receive monies.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of Mr. Anderson?
You're recognized.
For clarification, thank you. When you mentioned, when you said that the authorization could only be done by the General Assembly, is that the entire General Assembly or ALC, or is that the six designated individuals, three from the House and the three from the Senate, that could authorize those transfers?
I understand your question. And the answer to that is the whole General Assembly. We have to draft a bill to transfer monies into that fund. So the whole General Assembly has to enact some type of So the whole General Assembly has to enact some type of legislation to point monies into this fund that we're creating.
Okay. So the six members that are on this, that the three that, from each chamber that's already been designated, they would just be authorizing expenditures, not transfer of funds into the fund?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any other questions? Representative Ry, if you'll come down to the mic. Representative Ry, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Speaker, I have two questions for you, sir. You and I spoke a little earlier in the week about the four-to-one matching money for our road system. And also, I would like to ask you a question concerning the fiscal session. That normally was going to start a week from Monday, but I just wonder if there'd been any changes there.
So Kevin and Jake or others can correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as any funding for the highways, for Department of Transportation, this does not affect any of that. And I had asked that question of Kevin earlier this week because I know that's something we had, we had worked on, but my understanding is none of that is affected. This is only transferring those surplus funds into this newly created account and then establishing a mechanism to disperse those funds. As to your second question, at this point, we, we're required by law to convene on April 8th, and that's certainly our intent. But then beyond that, as far as the exact schedule, that remains to be seen, just as we did with this. We'll look at the current conditions and look to, to see what makes sense in terms of being able to conduct the state's business, but also to make sure that we're conducting our business in a way that is as safe and appropriate under the circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Representative Meeks, you come to the mic. You're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question that I had from a constituent, according to the bill, any expenditures out of this fund, there has to be a report sent to members of the General Assembly. Will that report also be made available to the public so the public can see what we're doing with this fund? And if so, do we know where that would be posted at?
That's certainly the intent, and I believe everything that, virtually everything that's provided by the administration by law to the General Assembly is made available. I believe it would be made available online on the BLR's website. Kevin's giving me the thumbs up. But that, that's the Arcleg website and we'll make sure that that's available. One of the other things I would mention is that when the request is made by the governor, that, the copy of that request is going to go to the entirety of the General Assembly. So everybody here will have that. I know that the reporting is important. That will help to let you know where things stand, but also I think it's important, and Representative Jett suggested that, that early on, we have that distributed out to the members. And so that's something else I wanted to mention. So everybody will, will have knowledge and that will likewise be online, or we'll make sure that it's available so that individuals can, can access that. I'm, Kevin, give me the thumbs up on that one? All right. Thank you.
Representative Wayne, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, to give us an idea, I recognize that there is a lot of flexibility and fluidity with this, but when we're looking at a potential of Category A funding cut by 4.18 percent, would the money that we are allocating, if it was all applied evenly, allow us to fully fund all of Category A?
I'll let some, I'll let Jake probably, or Mr. Bleed, or Mr. Anderson address that. I believe the short answer is no, but we'll let Mr. Bleed respond to that one.
Mr. Bleed, you're recognized.
Thank you. Jake Bleed, DFA Office of Budget. The amount that we're cutting from the Category A is $236 million. The amount that we're asking transfer for is $172 million. So it would not be there to fill every hole.
Thank you.
Members of the committee, any more questions? I don't see any hands. What's the pleasure of the committee?
I move do-pass.
Have a motion do-pass? That's a proper motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Mr. Clerk, read the committee report.
Mr. Speaker, we, your committee of the whole, to whom was referred House Bill 1001 by Speaker Shepard, beg leave report we've had the same under consideration and herewith return the same with the recommendation that it do-pass. Respectfully submitted, Representative Elaine Jean, Chair.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we rise and report.
That's a proper motion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Members, if you'll hold on just for, for a second, we will take just a short recess, stay, stay in your seats, and then I anticipate moving to an adjourn motion, but I need to The House will come back into session. Representative Meeks, for what purpose? Let's hear your motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move that after the announcements, the distribution of the calendars, and any remaining communications, we adjourn until 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
That's a proper motion, not debatable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Members, I appreciate again your work today. I appreciate your willing to work with us on the logistics. I think that things have worked very well. Again, thank you to UALR, Arkansas Public Broadcasting, and all of the medical providers that were here to help facilitate this. But don't, don't forget, just because this is, we're wrapping up, continue to maintain your social distancing. And I would also ask that, it's been suggested to me by our healthcare providers that those towards the top leave first, and then those that are here at the bottom, if they want to leave out the, the bottom exits. So let's try and file out orderly, and I will see you back here tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock. Any questions in the meantime, please feel free to contact me. There's nothing further without objection. We're adjourned.